Welcome to the October meeting of the Franklin City School Board. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and welcome everyone. We're gonna try to not take up too much time of your evening. So first up, do we have a motion to come out of closed session?
I move that the school board had a meeting in closed session to see which one proper motion to come out of closed session.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a couple of seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that motion carries? Do we have a certification of our closed session?
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded. My screen just went blank. Yours can you just went blank. Okay. Pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section two point two dash three seven one two D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia laws now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification applies and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that motion carries? Next up, we have motions from closed session and we'll, well, I think we've got two items, so we'll take Personnel Agenda, the original Personnel Agenda first. Do we have a motion in regards to the original Personnel Agenda?
I still move.
To approve?
Approve.
We have a motion to approve the original Personnel Agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that motion carries? Next up, we have the Personnel Agenda addendum. Do we have a motion in regards to that?
So move.
To approve?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve the addendum to the Personnel Agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that motion carries? Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please join me. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving right along. Next up is the approval of our agenda. Do we have a motion to approve our agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as stated.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion does carry. Next up, two point eight roll call. Ms. Moore, would you so kindly lead us in roll call?
Sure. Robert Hope.
Present.
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 Present. Hey, hey, the gang's all here. Alright. Next up, Citizens Time. Ms. Moore, did we have anyone sign up for Citizens Time? Alright. Next up, S R three public comment. As you may recall, we had this last week as well. With the S R three funding, we are required to have periodic public hearings in regards to how that money is being spent, suggestions from the public, things of that nature. Did anyone sign up for that, Ms. Moore? Okay. Being that no one signed up for that and since we are having the normal public comments section, I will go through the normal process that we would. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in regards to the S R three funding? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in regards to the S R three funding? Going thrice. Anyone wishing to speak in regards to the S R three funding? That is now closed. Alright, moving right along. Item number three on the agenda is our consent agenda. We have three items before us. All three are field trip requests, overnight field trip requests for wrestling. The first one is in December. That is the wrestling, wrestling tournament at Perry McClure High School. The second one is, we will, we will go ahead and we'll be a little ahead of the game and we will say that is our team going to the regionals.
Yeah.
At Cumberland High School. And then the third one is where our wrestling team will be going to the state wrestling tournament in Salem. They say speak good things and they will happen, so that's what we're gonna do. Any questions in regards to the three field trip requests? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion in regards to the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Next up, we have a special presentation, the annual impact statement from our wonderful partners at W H R O. Yes, absolutely, you may.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Sterling, thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight. My name is Bert Schuman. I'm the President and CEO of W H R O. With me is my Vice President of Education, Elmer Seward. So if you have the hard questions, he's your man. So we've given you hard copies of the annual impact statement we provide you each year. I'm not gonna go through all that, but I'm gonna do a little presentation for you, which will kind of summarize the relationship we have and the work that we do for you. Good, so. So as I mentioned, the report, you have the hard copy, twenty pages. Have fun if you can't sleep one night to read through all of that. But I'm here tonight, if you're new to the board, because you're one of twenty-one school divisions that literally own the license to W H R O. We're the only media organization in the entire country owned by collaboration of schools. We work together. We work with superintendents, we work with school board reps, we work with assistant superintendents and a whole list of other folks to provide you a whole list of products and services. So first off, E Media V A is a service we've been providing for about a decade now. It is a grouping of learning objects. They can be videos, audios, lesson plans, games, quizzes, really anything you can digitize. Every learning object, tens of thousands of learning objects are all correlated to the Virginia Standards of Learning. We work closely with the Department of Education, provide service, learning objects that they want. We work with superintendents. And it is all free to all of your parents, to all of your teachers, all of your students. And we continue as you need more learning objects, especially in this world of virtual that we've been living in for so long. You can get quick access to any subject matter, primarily high school, but really, well, K twelve really for E Media. With a quick click through E Media V A free service by E Media V A dot org and have access to, again, tens of thousands of learning objects. We do a lot of professional development for your teachers. You can see the list of courses we did this past year. From distance learning tools to blended learning to social emotional learning, lots of different topics over, over the last year your teachers took advantage of. Student services, this is a big item. We have produced for you online courses, primarily high school, but some middle school. You can see the list of twenty-eight courses there from algebra, trigonometry, trig, astronomy, biology, the list goes on. We're kind of the manufacturer. We manufacture the course and we give them to you. They're meant to be used with teachers though, but you decide how you want to use them. If they're fully at home, it's flipped, blended, you could add those attract content, you can modify the course to meet your, the way you set your curriculum. But we've built them and because you're an owner of W H R O, you get these for free. Schools around the Commonwealth that don't, are not an owner, pay about ten thousand dollars a course. So you get that for free as being an owner of W H R O. Along with the courses, we produced the state's first African-American history course in conjunction with the Department of Education and the Governor's Commission. Last year, sixteen school divisions used the course in a kind of a beta mode. Now every school division in the Commonwealth can offer that course. Again, your own choosing, but it is available now. We've done the online portion of that course. Virginia TV Classroom. So when the, when the pandemic hit, I got a call from a superintendent who said, you know, online's not very good for young kids, for kindergarten, first, second, third graders, it just doesn't work well. So can you help us out, W H R O? Then Dr. Lane from the Department of Education called and said, you know, we got all this online learning, but lots of kids don't have access to online. W H R O, can you help us? Well, every child, every family has access to public television in the state because it's broadcast over the air. So if you have a TV, you have access. And so we created Virginia TV Classroom. So we worked with a number of teachers around primarily our region, various subject matters. They in effect did Zoom lessons. They sent to us and we did our TV magic and turned them into TV shows. So two weeks after the pandemic started, we were airing three, three hours every day for the next nine months of K through seven instructional programming for our youngest children. And what ended up happening is all the public TV stations in Virginia carried this as well. So literally every Virginia student had, had access to K through seven lessons during the first nine months of the pandemic. Now those lessons are in E Media V A. So if you ever want to go back and look at a lesson, all that content has been moved to our on-demand service, E Media V A. So we're very happy with about that. Here's a little sampling.
Attention, parents and students. Virginia TV Classroom is making it easy again for you to learn in your living room. We're back for season two. Students kindergarten to seventh grade tune in weekdays to see teacher-led and SOL-aligned instruction. It's Virginia's teachers teaching on TV. Watch Virginia TV Classroom and learn more.
Beginning September fourteenth at eleven on W H R O.
We're very happy to be able to bring that to the Commonwealth. Virtual Virginia, you're all familiar with that because a lot of online learning over the past couple, year and a half or so. W H R O founded Virtual Virginia and now we operate the technical side of that service. We love to celebrate smart kids, you know, the football and basketball players and wrestlers get lots of credit, but we love to celebrate the smart kids. And so we have a number of contests we've had over the years, the PBS Kids Writers Contest where children K through five write and illustrate stories, submit them, and we have judges. And then during normal years, we have a TV show where we celebrate the winners. Of course, the Spelling Bee, the Regional Spelling Bee, this will be the fifteenth year of that Spelling Bee. Your middle school, six through eight, have your competition locally, then you send your winners to our Regional Bee at the station. Winner of the Regional Bee goes to the Nationals. So hopefully you've gotten word out that, you know, that now is the time to sign up for the Spelling Bee. I believe we're looking at, hopefully, an in-person bee, I think is, we're hoping, keep fingers crossed that we can do that. This year, last year had to be a virtual bee. And the Great Computer Challenge, some of you may be young enough that you participated in it back when you were in school. It's the thirty-sixth year, kids K through twelve come together and they, they form teams and compete around various software programs and platforms. So it's a weekend over at O D U and it gives a great opportunity for kids to compete and they get these ridiculously big trophies if they win. So that's been going on for thirty-six years. We've been, we've had a program for a number of years called American Graduate. The first couple of iterations were around on-time graduation to make sure kids graduate on time. During that process, graduation rates improved from eighty percent to ninety percent. Of course, we can't take all the credit as much as we like to, but things did improve. Now we've been focused on workforce development and specifically, we've been talking about exposing women to jobs that may not normally be traditionally their kind of jobs. Here's a sampling.
Hey ladies, check out my cool t-shirt and check out Pure and Swan.
I am strong.
You got that right.
I think I might be.
We love a challenge.
I have nine skills. I work like a girl.
Are you ready for this?
So we're, we're heavily into the workforce, development, workforce space right now, encouraging kids who are not college-bound to be prepared to go into the workforce. We do a lot for our youngest children. We have lots of learning programs. We have three different vans. We have a literacy van, a STEM van, and now an environmental science van. We're happy to bring those out. I've got a bunch of staff that will come out and work with your, your classes of youngest grade levels to STEM, environmental science, and, I'm sorry, and literacy. We also have, I mentioned vans, we have camps, reading camps, coding camps, first book programs, all sorts of items for the youngest children. Just give us a call. Don't worry about the distance. We're, we're happy to come out and to work with your teachers and your youngest children to help provide additional services to them. And finally, in the, in the report that you got, the hard copy report, you care as board members about your investment. You invest in W H R O, three dollars per student each year. That translated to three thousand forty dollars last year. You received value in savings last year of six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. That's a return on investment of two hundred and six dollars for every dollar you invested. I hope you like the ROI. Happy to take any questions.
Anyone have any questions, comments?
What's the participation rate in our, our schools? Do you know, can you speak to that?
The specific participation will be in your report.
In the report?
If you look under each.
Each, each page is customized to the division and then the actual usage for, for each. Some of it, we don't have information on because like the courses we've given to you and you just use them while you want. So we won't have details on some of that, but like professional development and some of the children's contests, we didn't know. Anything else?
Any other questions? I will say I've, I've had the ability. I've sat in on a couple of the H R E T A meetings and it is quite interesting. You don't realize the breadth of stuff that is pushed out for school divisions to use until you're sitting in those meetings and see some of the, part of those, you're part of those conversations and see the things that are going on. It's really interesting.
In our last conversation with the superintendents, that, that very issue came up about how we can better let principals and teachers know because they're the end users. So if you have strategies that you'd like to partner with us to get the word out to more of your teachers and principals, give me a shout. We can, we can make that happen. A lot of school divisions are trying to take advantage of that to get the word down to the, the end users, the teachers that would use the products.
Prior to COVID, we did the STEM lab, the literacy mobile, but I'm gonna make an announcement and I'll make certain I bring this to the next superintendent's meeting. And the announcement I'm gonna make later on is directly connected to W H R O's algebra and geometry support that we received. And it's, it's gonna be pretty big. Can't tell you right now, but I wanna make certain that I let you know that it was direct, there was a direct link from the programming that the kids were able to access and, and actually expand their knowledge base. I'll write it up for you guys.
Good, good. Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Next up, Finance and Federal Programs, and I believe we have Mr. Ryder joining us remotely. There he is.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, and, and we are here. It's not just the ceiling.
First up, we have the vouchers for October and they are listed here. October was a very small month for pay, for accounts payable because of a problem we ran into. And so this is much lower than normal. We only had, basically, we only had one check run on October eighth. And so after tonight's board meeting and tomorrow's meeting with the city, I believe the payables will begin resuming again. But these are the, these are the invoices for the month of October and a good deal of the expenditures were made out of grant funds, which tomorrow morning will be deposited back into our bank account.
Any questions or comments in regards to the vouchers? Alright.
Alright, next up is the financial report for the month of October. And so this is the, this is the normal financial statement structure that you've all been used to seeing. That's the same background information I include in every presentation. And the layout is the same, nothing's changed there. So this is, this is fund count, this is the general fund. Thirty-three percent of our year, four twelfths of our year has passed now. And so about thirty-three percent of our year has passed and we've received thirty, about thirty-one percent of the revenue, so pretty much on target there. No surprise in the instruction salary expense, that's the first line item because, as you know, July and August, we don't code payroll to for teachers and teaching assistants and everybody there. So by, by the end of the year, that nineteen percent slowly climbs up and matches the the percentage of what should be spent by this time of year. So we, we have about four point one million that's come in, about three point seven that's gone out. And so we're at about a four hundred thousand dollar surplus for the general fund so far. Next slide.
We're getting there. There we go.
There we go. And the textbook fund, as you know, we had a beginning balance. So this is a, this is a fund that is separate from the city checking account and that. So this is a separate standalone fund and the balance cannot get too large. So beginning balance, given the year, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. So we, we want to project a deficit, we want to spend it with a deficit to bring that balance down. And so we're, we're right on track there. Again, the seventy-three thousand dollars in revenue, I don't book that until May. Usually I write the check in May after I've collected all these dollars from the state. The Nutrition Fund, we're three months into this. Remember, the claims are always a month behind, so but we are still actually being, receiving them at the summer rate. So that's, that's a little higher than the national school lunch program rate. So then I did want to, I just modified that stuff down at the bottom there because we had a beginning balance of about three hundred and sixty-five thousand and then this, this due from was accrued revenues. And the accrued payroll and the accrued payables figures there, once the, the due forms are collected and those are paid, that's your actual unextended fund balance. And so, so we're projecting, at two periods, we actually have about five hundred and eight thousand dollars because we had a surplus in last year, which is nice. But there's the video we will be sending next month. They'll usually send in December the excess spending plan request because it's, the balance is a little higher than your three-month average. They're watching to keep more than three months' average of their cash, the USDA cash on, on you. And so the next slide is the grants. The grants, again, we had about five hundred thousand dollars of grant funding come in, in the first four months of this year. And about one point three eight seven million go out, of which a good portion of that was in September and August. So that caused a, a eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar deficit in the grants. You know, usually in grants, you do have a deficit. You always, almost always have a deficit because you're spending before you're receiving, but the dollars got kind of too large there in September and October and that caused the, the cash flow issue that we had last month. On the next slide, you know, for the second time now, I'm just illustrating some of the cash receipts that are coming in to offset that deficit. So by, you know, by the end of June, you know, we always, we always accrue our revenues back and we collect all of the grant funds that are spent. But so this is where we at, this is where we're at now. And so the overall income statement, here's where we are. Little things under the blue heading there. You know, we're at a twenty million dollar budget. So we collected about four point seven in total, spent about five point three. Again, a lot of this deficit is attributed to the grants. And the only little note I put at the bottom there is that, you know, we budgeted revenue and expense in the textbook funds, so that ninety-four thousand dollars variance, the budget is supposed to be there because we're supposed to spend that fund into the deficit, into a deposit.
I think Mr. Ryder froze. We'll give it a second. He should catch right back in. This is one of the lovely parts of technology.
I'm gonna isolate just the general fund and the grants.
I will say the, the six seventy-one deficit, if you take the five seventy-seven, that magic number that we keep referring back to, that was the carryover from last year because the bathroom project was not finished, and you add in that ninety-four from the textbook, that results in your six seventy-one. Did we just completely lose him?
I don't think so.
Ah, so he's gonna log back in. He'll pop back in. Okay. You think it's us? Ah. So it wasn't Mr. Ryder that froze. It was us that froze.
Nice.
So good evening again, everyone. While Mr. Ryder, and I know these questions would be more posed to him, did, did anyone have any questions so far over what we've gone over up to this point? And we'll give Ms. Moore just a second to get back to the morning.
He's, he's in the waiting room.
You have all the questions.
Yeah, did you? Ah, yep. I was gonna say, if there's no objections, just for the sake of time, we'll put a pause on finance at that point. I'll go ahead and skip down to business by the board because we really don't need any PowerPoint or anything. I'll go ahead and skip down to business by the board because we really don't need any PowerPoint or anything for that. And then we'll circle back, that should give enough time to get that up and running, if we're okay with that. Or do you have a preference of doing it in a different order, Dr. Sterling?
No, 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 I could have done my report now.
Okay, well, let's do that, let's go ahead and we'll do that and get that out of the way. That's okay, you go right ahead. Okay, well, then I'll, I'll go and we'll, we'll hop around, we'll hop around. All right, so, business by school board members, um, item number seven point one, the V S B A delegate handbook. Um, as everyone is aware, week after next is the V S B A annual convention in Williamsburg. Part of that process every year is the delegate assembly where V S B A votes on their positions, um, legislative positions on items that are coming before our state legislature. Um, I've included, I've had Ms. Moore attach the delegate handbook so that everyone can review that, just like we do every year. If you would take the time to look at the recommended position that V S B A has on those items that are listed and let me know if you support V S B A's position or if there are specific items that you are not in agreement with V S B A's position. So that when I vote on the fifteenth, I will know how to vote for the board. Um, if you'll just let me know by Sunday, the, the fourteenth, that's fine, that's fine. It is, and I won't say it's like one particular part, but it's, um, it gets down to, let me see if I can click into it. See if it'll load for me. I may have to bring it up, oh, it did come up. Um.
Oh, good evening.
There he is, all right, pause that, pause just a second, Mr. Ryder, let me finish this out and we'll hop right back to you. We had technical difficulties. Um, the, the reports, like the report of the nominating committee, the report of the president, the report of the task forces, those reports aren't really things that we have positions on. Um, it would be, um, item number ten, which starts on page eighty-seven. And each one of those items should be listed, see if I can get my cursor to come up, there it is. There we go, almost there. So each one of the items, it'll say legislative position number, it have the number, and then it'll say, it'll give you the title, it'll give you an explanation and at the bottom of it, um, it'll say the rationale for it. Um, and then let me know if you agree with that rationale, um, to support it or not. And that's all I need to know. And it looks like, cause usually it's about like ten, um, it looks like there's nine position, nine legislative positions this year. I wanna see, let me go back up to number one. And they're looking to vote on these as a block. And at the, right before legislative position number one, it gives you some background on it, um.
Which, which page is that?
Starts on page eighty-seven. All right. Since Mr. Ryder is back, we will hop right back to the financial report. We were on the very last page when everything froze with Mr. Ryder in mid-sentence. So we will hop back to that final page of the financial report. And you had just finished saying, Mr. Ryder, where you, where everything froze, you were talking about the ninety-four thousand, um, from the textbook fund.
Right, yes, uh, so that, that, uh, that varies to my, because it's an intentional overspend to bring the balance down. And then the other, uh, line item for the operations and maintenance is for the bathroom project, that also is, uh, intentional. And so, um, does anyone have any questions on this set of financial statements?
I think we're good.
The next item is the very first, the very first, um, time the city of, the school division of Franklin City has created, uh, externally created financial report. Ordinarily, all this information would be rolled up into the city Franklin's caper and a good portion of it will. Um, but this is now the new, um, the new annual report that we will be, um, creating from our, uh, from our auditors and our audit of the, uh, the overall school division. This financial report, uh, um, is not like the, uh, activity funds, it's got a whole different look and feel to it. And, uh, believe it or not, this hundred and sixteen pages is your basic financial statement for a school division. Uh, this is not a, a comprehensive annual financial report, drop off the C, this is an annual financial report. Um, uh, and so there's really, we, we wouldn't have enough time in the, in the day to go through every page of this thing. Um, but it has, um, lots and lots of pages regarding, um, the pension, the D R S, the projections for the future and liabilities and, uh, stuff like that. Um, this is a draft, by the way, and only when Superintendent and I sign the representation letter and send it back to the auditors does this thing become final. As a, uh, we have sent this document to the city so that they can extract certain things and put it into their caper. And, um, this thing is still under review by the quality control people at Robinson, uh, Farmer Cox. Uh, you know, they're, they're finding, uh, they, you know, they're finding maybe this calendar here or the date that the, uh, school division came into existence, Mr. Holt linked it out earlier, and, uh, various things like that. If you could stop right there, scroll back up just so the headings appear, if you could, just. All right, oh, oh, okay. Uh, okay, well, um, there, there. So this, this is, this is one of the, the things that, um, you know, was one of the time things that took up some time, uh, when we were trying to get the trial balance figures from the city, these are the trial balance figures we were referring to. Um, so it, it's, this is a typical balance sheet and, um, so all of these numbers here is what, uh, each one, the school operating.
Bless you, thank you.
Is just one, and, and all of the grants inside that thing. And then the cafeteria is the actual checking account and the textbook's a checking account. Now, for the first, it's a double pool of this, there's two firsts tonight, first, the overall financials. Secondly, the first time school activity funds are actually included in financial statements. Ordinarily, those people thought that column would never be there, but they're now part of the overall financial statement. The fund balance in the first column, school operating, all the way down, says unassigned fund balance, or total fund balance, six hundred and thirty-one, nine twenty-one. That figure there is where the five seventy-seven, two hundred goal request comes out of. And so, um, yeah, you can, you can peruse this and if anybody has any questions on this, um, you know, they can direct them to me. And if it's, if it's really, you know, to do with the pensions and the, and the D R S liabilities and stuff like that, I'll lead to, uh, engage the auditors to help me with any questions on that. Um, can you scroll down to the next page, I wanna see if that's got the, uh, the income statement. Now, that's things like net position and whatnot, but things that, uh, usually vibrating agencies like to state. Doesn't, doesn't apply to us. So anyway, that's the formal, uh, statement format that, um, you know, pretty much, uh, standard for any school division that it doesn't actually, or, uh, any municipality that doesn't create a cap. A little more, just a little more, gotta see the bottom line. There it is, okay. Yeah, see the net change in fund balance in the first column, there's that eighty-three thousand, that's where we, we were trying to get to a hundred and twenty-five and we ended up at eighty-three, so pretty darn close. There's a hundred and seven, the next column, there's a hundred and seventy-five, and the nutrition and, uh, and twenty-eight thousand dollars in. So those are the, those are your very first financial statements as a separate, uh, separate financial statement for the school division. And so once those are finalized, they will go into the city's caper and twenty-twenty-one will be behind us.
Any questions for Mr. Ryder in regards to the audits? As, as stated, this is just a draft copy of the audit. There's still a few things that are being tweaked, for instance, as we said, we have not been a school division since eighteen sixty-eight. Um, so there are a few, you know, things that are, are needing to be tweaked in that. And then as soon as, you know, those are adjusted and corrected and Dr. Sterling and Mr. Ryder sign off on that, that, uh, that is our final audit and we will get that finalized copy. Cash flow?
Okay.
Did you have a question, Mr. McCurry?
Um, I think something that was mentioned earlier, do, do we have all the information we need for this to be completed?
Uh, the, the one thing, uh, that the auditors, two things, one was an entry that the auditors, uh, are in disagreement with on, uh, one of the fixed assets way down on page seventy-seven that, uh, that they will be discussing with, uh, the city's auditors. One, two, there's only one thing, the, uh, every, every entity really asks their attorneys to see, uh, if there are any pending legal issues that need to be recorded in the financial statements, such as a liability for a lawsuit or something. And, uh, in between closed and, and open sessions, tonight I sent the, uh, I nudged our attorney to respond to the auditors and, and he said he did, so they should be wrapping that up very quickly.
So just.
I, I projected this thing will be finalized before the end of next week.
So at this point, it's just that one final piece on that fixed liability asset that was in question?
Right, right.
All right, any other questions on this, on the audit?
Okay. Um, so, uh, the, so the cash flow issue that came about in October, we really had been building through August and September. Um, there were a couple of missteps, um, and, uh, we, what happened was the, the essence of the problem was that uh, too many federal dollars that are reversible, too many federal dollars went out in too short of a time period. And, uh, that served to deplete these, the, uh, school divisions allocated cash balance. So, um, like I said, up to September of twenty-twenty-one, this, we, we really hadn't needed to project cash flows because the monthly cycle of cash receipts in and out, or in, always out based on level of cash expenditures and it didn't, it didn't reduce our, uh, allocated cash balance, uh, although, you know, we weren't getting any attention. Um, and so when I keep seeing allocate, I mean, it's, it's, we're part of the, the city's checking account, but part of their checking account is allocated to us for our operations. And so this, this, this balance, um, uh, you know, now that it's been really pointed out in, in a variety of ways, um, we can actually keep, you know, pretty good track of, you know, if we're gonna be projecting cash flow every month, we can really, uh, keep a very good track of that. I've spent the last three weeks of my life, uh, creating the new, uh, cash flow projection model uh, and I've sent it over to the city and they, they come back with some constructive criticism and we're, we're, we're honing that thing into, you know, just the right, just the right, um, format and content. And what it's going to do is, it's forward-looking, that's the whole point. No, we project something that happened in the past, we're projecting the future. And so we will be able to, we as meaning ourselves and the city will be able to very quickly, um, identify where, uh, cash balances will be too low and something has to happen long before that happens. So if we go into the next statement, um, during the next slide, you'll see, um, okay, well, this is just a, a little bit of an explanation of, of the overall, overall process, you know. And so, you know, federal, federal funds are, uh, reimbursement grants. Um, oddly enough, for the city, they're not reimbursement grants, they send them the money beforehand, is interesting. But, uh, for school divisions, we have to spend the money first and then ask for it to be paid back. And that is a, that's a, uh, that's a process in and of itself. You know, we have a person, uh, half of her job is just doing nothing but asking for reversals for grants, all along. Okay, so on the, uh, um, boy, I really overexplained this, okay, so, so in addition to the, uh, the, the, because it was such, like I said, such a huge problem, um, this, this dive in here is not just for our, our sake. Uh, this whole presentation, you know, goes up as a public document, so, you know, the city can kind of read through how, you know, this thing came about and, uh, that, that, um, certain grants, we have to actually wait until invoices are received in the next month, at the end of the year, June thirtieth. Um, we, we have to wait and we have to push all those invoices, uh, into the month before, uh, most other months. We just, you know, claim these things as soon as they're, uh, as soon as we receive the paperwork. Um, and so there's another, uh, uh, for example, payroll, okay. So when we have, when we amend the grants, um, that's a whole, another whole different problem that causes delays and our doctors get into. And we have to amend the grants ever so often, uh, there's a variety of reasons, but we do. And there's two built-in time, uh, frames that causes delays. One, we have to get them to approve the amendment and then we have to get them to approve the intervention. When I say they, I'm referring to the junior department of education and these people work on their own timeframe. So all we can do is get it in there as fast as we can submit it and, uh, we don't like amendments, they don't like amendments and that's why we don't like to do them, but when we have to, it causes delays and we're claiming to get it back. Okay, all right. So this, this, this presentation here is just the cash flow for the immediate future because, um, it was such a big problem in the month of October, as you can see, October first through fifteenth there. Um, we had a, this is the general fund only because these things are so lot, this cash flow projection is so large, I have to split it up on two, two pages. And so, um, at September thirtieth, those are the, those are the results of September thirtieth, we have about seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars surplus in the, um, in the general fund. Um, so far so good, that's not the problem. Well, you know, the next, on the next two-week period, we only brought in four hundred and sixty thousand over the process of payroll and we paid a bunch of bills. You can see the, uh, operations and maintenance there, we have five hundred five thousand, it's just on that line alone. So that, that caused the, the deficit there and then we got some revenue in by the next Friday. Um, and then so by ten, by, by October twenty-ninth, end of month, um, that was the activity just for that week. That blue column there. And so when you add all those columns over, uh, we projected for just the month of October to be at about four million and ninety-eight thousand for revenue over the ten and four point one. And so, uh, going to the bottom, just for the operating fund, we projected to be three sixty-three with ten and four oh one. So, um, so far so good. Now, when you get to the next slide, this is where the revenue problem, this is just the grants. And, I mean, you can, you know, you, you, not even the public can see, oh my gosh, you know, you guys have seventy thousand dollars of total revenue and you got a million to go out the door, so that's, that's what caused the big problem. Uh, a, a large amount of dollars going out in a short time period. And so, uh, what happened is we, uh, over, over in the projected column there, October thirty-first, uh, for a few, for the weeks of October, uh, we were pretty bad because the grants had outspent the operating, operating surplus. But down there, the blue line, down there, the blue line, uh, by the end of October, I mean, literally the last day of October, overall, between the general and the grant fund, we just eat from above, you know, above negative, at a hundred and eighty-two thousand. So as of, the very last column there, as of October thirty-first, which was, you know, Sunday, uh, uh, you know, we were about two hundred and seven thousand dollars positive and the city sends us a cash screening every day and on Monday, it was like this two hundred and eight and change. So that, that was the month of October for twenty-twenty-one. And so, the next slide, um, is just a little bit of information. I, I didn't know, most people, the, the first one, there's funding gap, like I say, well, between the time we send the money in or send the claim in and we get the money, that's a gap of time. Um, and there are other funding gaps, I wanted to cover them all. The city, there has absolutely no funding gap whatsoever. They simply put the money in, their allocation to us is pretty much clockwork. Um, this big funding gap, I don't, most people don't know, there's a big chunk of our money that doesn't start flowing until January, every year. Uh, this year, out of our, you know, eight and a half million dollars of revenue, one and a half million doesn't start flowing until January. So the first two and six months here, we have to go without that money. And then, the federal reimbursement, you know, from the moment we hit the button, so the moment we get it, 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 it kind of varies, oh, oh, it's seven days to thirty-one days. Um, and the, you know, the city business office pointed out that the cares funding, for some reason, is averaging more days than the other federal funding, which is interesting, but I have no answer for why that is. But, um, but, so there's, there's some other funding gaps there, but, uh, I just thought I'd throw that in there to complete the picture.
Um, Jess, I want you to-
Jeff?
Here it is.
Jeff, can you hear me?
Oh, go, go ahead.
Can you hear me? I'm so sorry. I want you to, um, just take a little bit more time and explain to the board because this is something that was pointed out over and over again by the city and there were some, uh, how we were filing the claims, how we're taking the federal dollars and the, what we're spending it on and actually filing, the time period. Do you remember our process? We wait thirty days and we, we file the last month, which caused a hiccup with the finances? I think that needs to be explained a little bit more for clarification purposes.
Uh, okay, the, uh, the claim, oh, the claim process?
Yes, just, just briefly.
Okay.
Because they need to understand why that, you know, they're thinking that our, we're filing the claims late, which actually we're not.
Right, the, the claim process works like this. The, we have two payrolls and all, all the payrolls and all the checks that we write, the payables checks, uh, we, we spend that money in a particular month. Within one or two weeks tops, maybe usually even the first week after the month ends, um, all those dollars are tallied up for each grant, each one of these. It's not even each grant, it's each fund within each grant. Title three has three funds, title one has three funds. Most of these federal grants have three funds, they have three overlapping, um, grant periods. And so, we have, you know, there's three different funds that we're going to be spending title one money out of every month. And so, each one of them has to be parsed out and tallied up and then sent in. And, uh, and when it's sent in, uh, the claim for reimbursement, here in this yellow column here is the dates that we are sending them to them. And then, when we actually get the, the money back is in the, on, on the orange, the deposit. So, and then I, these yellow columns are, I, I put these in. And so, we had to manually count up the days because the, because we do calculations on dates. And so, there, at the bottom there is the seven and over on the other side over there is the thirty-two days. And so, sometimes, we will actually spend the money, but we don't claim it right away because that particular grant is in the process of being amended. And the amendment is a, is a, is a long two-step process. We have to, and why, why is the grant amended? Well, because we, um, we sometimes have to change what a, a particular line is between the grant. You know, we, we might spend more in supplies in a month and that supplies line has, so we have to take it from another line. That, you know, there's a position we're not filling or a technology expense we're not making and we need it down in supplies. And so, we have to, you know, send in a written request to this Virginia Department of Education. They evaluate our que, all this is taking time. They evaluate the request, the amendment, uh, then they decide and then they tell us it's okay. And then, uh, then they say, go ahead and change it. On our DDOA website, we do the, called the reallocation. Then they, we have to wait for them to go in and approve that. So they have two rules that we have to wait for. All that time, we already spent the money. So by the time they finally say, okay, your grant, your amended grant is approved, now you can submit claims on that line. And so, there are sometimes delays between when we actually spend the money and let me submit it.
Thank you.
What, uh-
We don't really keep statistics, we don't keep stats on that. Uh, we just, you know, it's enough, it's enough for us to just get this stuff in. So usually, it's, it usually has never been a problem before, usually the minor amounts do.
So how many days, oh, I guess you're saying, I mean, I understand what you're saying is that the, the amount of time between spending the money and filing the claim, that can vary, uh, I mean, a week, two weeks, a month, or does that contribute to the cash flow issue? If the city is, is writing the check, but we're, that's extra time that we're waiting from, for either the federal or state, the grant money to be reimbursed?
Yeah, the, well, the, the payrolls, you know, the payroll usually gets the fifteenth, the last payroll. So these, these claims for a particular month, the prior month, are usually filed within five to seven, five business days or seven, seven working days from the end of a month, you know, depending on the volume of transactions. But it's not as though we, you know, waiting for weeks on end to file claims. Uh, we file these things as fast as possible. Um, sometimes there's, you know, not perfect, I mean, I mean, there are certain times that maybe a claim gets, you know, delayed for some reason, but usually it's because an amendment is taking time to, for us to get the submit button. But this, this thing that you're looking at now is nothing more than date submitted than the deposit arrived.
So the claims are, it's on a regular schedule, more or less, a couple of times a month? Is that what, is that what I'm understanding? When the claims are submitted, they're, they're batched together?
You go for every single grant, yeah, we have to pay for every month, like clockwork.
I see. So you're, you're making multiple, um, claims on the same grant, that's, is that correct?
Yes.
Throughout the, throughout the year, or, okay.
In looking at the scheduling of the dates, it looks like it's pretty much a weekly process that claims are being submitted. Um, but my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ryder, is that as long as the, the money is where we needed it to be, to be, to spend it, then they're going in on a regular cycle as far as submitting the claims. However, if we had a month, as he referenced, like, let's say, where we spent more than we had planned on cleaning supplies or, um, we'll use cares, for example, on COVID supplies, masks, things like that, and we have to reallocate from within that grant because we didn't fill a position that we had planned on, all of that request to reallocate has to go in and be approved and the funds moved where they need to be from within the, the grant itself, that's not on our end, before we can actually submit the claim to pay that-
I see.
-claim. That can cause a delay because now you're, now you're not just submitting the claim, you're having to adjust the bucket that the claim's coming out of and that's all got to be approved by somebody outside of us.
I see.
Yeah, each one of these claims has probably fifteen to twenty-five different lines and everything has to hit the exacts, but every single line is a figure and you can't, you can't exceed it or you have to break it from another line. Imagine trying to do that for forty different grants. It's, it's, it's a task.
Oh, I'm sure. So the allocated cash balance from the city, is that a kind of a, a fixed amount each month, or? How does that work?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Uh, how does the allocated cash balance from the city, how does that tie into, to all this? And, and with the cash flow, and I guess in particular with the cash flow issue? I mean, were we spending more than that allocated balance for that one month?
Yes, it was just for that one month and, uh, that allocated cash balance is, you know, what was there. And then, as the, each year, as the results go, if this, if the, if the school division has a surplus, the allocated cash balance actually rises, you know, until some point where, um, actually, fund balance, so the, the, if the cash rises and the other things stay the same, then, um, our un, unextended fund balance rises with the, with the cash. And, uh, that's where, that's where we make our role requests. So with, with the mechanics of this thing, the next, the next presentation really is, is how you, how we're going to be using this in the future. If we can go to that, it's going to be a repeat of this, but it's going to be, this information is going to be condensed, I think, out of one column and then you guys are all going to see my first draft projection of where we're going to end up at June thirtieth, at this, you know, at this point. And this is where, how, this is how the tool is to be used. We have to understand this particular presentation is, um, this is the cash flow projection looking forward. And, and this is where, uh, on the next slide, this is where, uh, the city is most interested in and I am too, and we are all, we're all interested. Um, as, uh, so that, oh, that gets, that takes us to December, so we go past October. So this is taking us out to the end of the year, end of the calendar year, December thirty-first. And why I have figures in this by eleven-five, that's tomorrow. Uh, why I have figures in here being paid where there's no payroll on it, because we have to restart paying our payables. So I've got about sixty-eight thousand dollars coming out of operations. Uh, the city has already deposited their four hundred and two thousand. Uh, if we scroll down, the grants, now, the whole grants write themselves because of tomorrow's deposit of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So here, um, this is where, there's that blue figure of two oh seven, that was, that was last Friday. And so, with the four hundred and two and the seven hundred thousand, you know, seventy, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, that's a one point three million dollars. Uh, our bank balance is right back to, you know, where it should be. But that yellow figure there is three hundred and forty-eight thousand to Willmott and another twenty thousand in other grants, we have to pay those bills, we're not going to get the reimbursement. So we have to pay those bills, even if we do pay those bills, the green line, because everybody's got to focus on the green line there, our bank balance is still almost nine hundred thousand dollars. And then, by next, the following next Friday is the April forty, I mean, even after payroll, November nineteenth, it's nine thirty, several reaches a million. November twenty-sixth, you know, it's still six hundred and forty-one thousand. Now, that box, that box for November, all those dollars inside there, you see the blue arrow, I have that being projected to come back in to us, four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars on December fifteenth. So you can see, we shoot right back up to nearly a million dollars in it. And so, that's, that's how this tool is going to be used. So now, if you take this and you do the exact same thing, but we take it to the end of June, you can see down there, the bottom, the bottom line, the green, we're not, we don't run into trouble. As you slide to the next slide, there's the general fund, okay? There you end up at the five seventy-seven deficit, like we're supposed to. And then, uh, so, well, there, there. This slide, this tells you everything, this is everything right here. These big old blue numbers right in the middle, where the S R three expenditures really start, you can see, we're, we, we come in at, uh, at December thirty-first, you know, five hundred and fifty-six thousand. Now, we start to spend a little cares money and then all that, all that money spent in January, that two hundred and twenty-eight, excuse me, I'm sorry, a hundred and twenty-six, five eleven, that becomes February's revenue in the grants. And then you spend sixty-three thousand in customer money. So that hundred and forty-six, that becomes March's revenue. You can see, our cash balance is still in the black there. But now, here's, here's how you, this is the tool that we're going to use. This is a simulation, by the way. This is not what we're actually going to do. This is what we're going to do if we don't do anything, if we don't change anything. And that's kind of one of the dangers of, you know, putting numbers out of the public domain if you can focus on these things. This is just a simulation. If we spend two hundred and thirty-eight thousand in March and it comes back in April, our March balance drops to three thirty-four, that's, that's very uncomfortable. That's, that, in the South is uncomfortable. But then the very next month, we spend it again and we drop to two oh six. In May of twenty-twenty-two, we're right back to October twenty-twenty-one again. We're way upside down and the city has to, you know, so, so. This isn't going to work. This thing, I could ordinarily never show it, or me, because this is finance committee superintendent and city. We would work all this stuff out so that green line never goes red. But I just, you know, for illustrative purposes tonight, I wanted to show you guys, we have the tool now in hand that we will not have a repeat of October twenty-twenty-one. It has been very hard on, uh, the city people, it's been very hard on this, uh, Franklin City Business Office. So if we get, put this in place and stick to it, we'll be fine. Where did I get the blue numbers up there? Okay, right here, this S R three projected cash flow, everything to the green column on the left, that's the actual application that's, that's about to be approved. And then I had to sit there and say, okay, so each one of these guys, when are we going to start spending it? What, when are we going to start spending this? And so, some of these things, they literally don't even happen until October twenty-twenty-three. Like first, that first item, you don't have anything because we don't even start spending it until twenty-twenty-three. This is one of the first grants, federal grants we've ever had, this multi-year. Everything else is a one-year thing, but this is a multi-year grant. So we have, we have flexibility. It's all those capital improvements down there that has the big dollars going out in a small time period and that's just not going to fly for us.
Mr. Ryder-
So we have to really have a lot of thought when we schedule these projects.
I think Mr. McCurry has a question.
Go ahead.
No, no, well, I guess maybe a clarification on the previous slide. Are, are you saying that this is, um, a tool that you can, you can put in various scenarios? And so, it's, it's a baseline for what, what actually may happen?
Yeah, this is a working document, yeah.
Right, okay.
When I meet with people, I'm going to be actually having a spreadsheet out of those blue numbers and be changing constantly to make sure that the red and the green line stays.
Right, okay, thank you.
Absolutely. So, I'm going to update this thing internally every week, presenting it every month. This has been the norm, this, this report has been the norm. Um, this is how we will avoid a repeat of October twenty-twenty-one. Um, and, uh, you know, the projection tool tells us we will not be starting all those projects to try and get them done by the start of the next school year, like, because we'll have to stagger the projects based on cash flow. Um, so there's all kinds of ideas, I just threw one out there, put the mod B off to twenty-twenty-three and maybe split up the bathrooms over the rates. How many bathrooms do we need done? It was great, great, get new builds. That's one, you know what I mean? And, and we stay, uh, we stay in the black, we're going to go down to the blue. So this is what will be, uh, this, you know, obviously, the city has all these documents that you guys have just seen. And so, we will be meeting them, meeting with them, you know, tomorrow and next week to reiterate this and, uh, hopefully, get an agreement moving forward on how we're, uh, we're going to work together.
I think one of the things I want the board to know and our community is that we work together with the city and just like Jeff said, we presented to the board. We have a meeting, uh, to calibrate with the city's financial department tomorrow, so we'll be going over all of these numbers. Um, the city mentioned a meeting at their last, uh, uh, meeting that we'd be meeting with them and that was through the request of the division. We're very open, we want to be transparent, but yes, there was a hiccup in October. We're very open, we want to be transparent, but yes, there was a hiccup in October. Uh, we definitely own that because it really boiled down to communication. And we want to make certain that we open the lines of communication consistently, be able to calibrate with the city so we can get ahead of this before anything like this happens again. Uh, Jeff, I want to thank you, the board, we always want to be solutions oriented. Like you said, whatever happened in October is the past, we're in November, and we're looking to create additional internal controls for the division and share those controls with the city, so we're all on the same page. Because if we do something internally and it really doesn't work or calibrate with the city's finances, um, then it doesn't work at all. So we really are going to share our internal controls with them, uh, the ones we've revamped, see what they say about it. Uh, if they have some input, we'll definitely take that into consideration and change what we need to do to make certain that everybody is moving in the right direction. So again, uh, October was a heavy cash month. Um, it's something we should have communicated earlier, but we have learned a very valuable lesson and we're ready to move forward.
Thank you for that, thank you, it's absolutely true.
Any questions for Mr. Ryder or Dr. Sterling in regards to the financial presentation?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ryder. Next up, item number six, superintendent's report. Dr. Sterling, I will turn it over to you for that.
Thank you so much, everyone, board members. Uh, I'm very excited to present um today regarding our teachers. And this presentation comes from one of our board members who really questioned me about, you know, how are the teachers doing, what are we doing for them, and can we do more? So out of that, I talked to uh some principals, and we came up with some recommend, we came up with a really good recommendation, and actually it's um on the tailwind of many other divisions that are taking the wellness and mental health of their teachers extremely seriously. So this presentation is to the Franklin City Public School Board regarding staff support, our employee support for the upcoming school year, for this school year. Questions from the board, are teachers burnt out? F C P S wants to provide support so that faculty and staff do not become overwhelmed with the constant demands of navigating during this national pandemic and staffing shortage. And that's exactly what our teachers have been doing. They have been navigating uncharted waters, and we really want to let them know this is new to all of us, but we greatly appreciate you. However, in order to be here, we know that self-care and mental health is extremely important to be able to do your job to the best of your ability. And then we have within our power to be able to change our schedule a little to give them some time, additional time for self-care, mental health, planning, um, future lessons, or just taking a moment to breathe. We want to be able to provide that to our teachers. Next. So background information, video E, in order to make this happen, the Virginia Department of Education requires that each school have a minimum of nine hundred and ninety instructional hours in a school year. Any hours over that amount is considered bank time and it's and can be used to adjust the calendar without makeup time. So as you can see, S P Morton has one thousand thirty eight hours, J P King has one thousand two hundred and twenty three hours, because their 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 uh class schedules are different, the times that they're in are different. And Franklin High School has one thousand one hundred and three hours. Olridge is forty eight, two hundred and thirty three, and one hundred and thirteen hours. That can be used to adjust the calendar to support our teachers with their uh wellness. Next. So board members, this evening, um, and the background information continues, there are twenty three Fridays left in the school year beginning December first, twenty twenty one. Fourteen Fridays are recommended to be considered for employee wellness days. And when I say fourteen Fridays, I mean a half-day schedule. So the teachers would come in for that half day. Early dismissal times would remain the same. F H S and J P King, twelve forty five uh P M, and S P Morton at one twenty P M. Early dismissal uses two hours of instructional time. Twenty eight hours are needed from bank, uh, from the bank hours to be able to implement this calendar recommendation successfully. And as you can see, we have that time. Next. So the recommendation is as follows. To provide support for faculty and staff for designated employee wellness days every other Friday beginning December third, twenty twenty one. And employee wellness days are listed. And as always, we always want to be able to pull some research for our board members. So you have uh many other school divisions in Region Two, because we represent Region Two, again, that are working with their teachers regarding uh employee mental health days and wellness days. And we would like to be added to that list with Virginia Beach, Portsmouth, Suffolk, and Hampton uh school, Hampton um city schools, which is quite interesting because they're giving two days off for Thanksgiving, and that's something that we already do for our employees and have done that for the past two years. Again, resources and articles to support teacher mental health was extremely critical because we all must remember, our teachers come out and they teach our children, but they also have to be well enough to be able to support their families and raise their own children and be happy and healthy individuals. And not having that kind of time really is a detriment when they have to come in to the schools, do lesson plans, a teacher shortage, and then all of a sudden be troopers with taking on additional students, when other teachers have to be quarantined, students have to be quarantined. It is a lot. And walking through those uh classes and seeing our teachers being resilient, we really, it is my recommendation that we show them their their, our appreciation that their mental health matters, and we want to be able to support them, and we have the bank hours to be able to do it.
All right, Dr. Sterling, you want to pause there? And I'll open it up to the board for any questions or comments, any discussion?
On those employee wellness days, are those, are there any activities planned for them? Or that's just downtime for them?
That is, that is activities for them. We always do recommend, recommend activities like uh planning, but we are working with our nurses to be able to come up with some themes. So once I, well, I'm back now, uh, pulling them together, we want them to have a focus. So yes, ma'am, that was in our plan as well.
So the students would leave early, but the teachers remain? Or will they have the option to leave as well?
They all will leave.
They all will leave?
Yes, ma'am, they all will leave.
Um, how will this imply, impact our early employees? Um, is it going to be cutting into what they're normally, you know, trying to make?
I'm glad you asked that, thank you. No, because our our employees, you know, are some of our most vulnerable employees, because it is a half a day they will get paid, just as they would for a normal full day.
Okay.
We don't ever want to be a detriment, thank you for allowing me to explain that, because that is important.
Are the extra days allowed? I mean, is it for for winter time, like snow days and stuff? Does that jeopardize any of that?
No, we do have extra days for snow days, and we also, if we have emergency days, remember, the state has already given us ten days if we needed them for virtual emergencies. So we're kind of, this is an unusual year, but it's a good year to be able to provide our teachers the support. And that's something that was given to us.
Um, has there been any communication with local um daycares to see if they'll be able to receive children early on those days? Is that something that we've considered? I would hate to have like an extra stress on um
Parents.
Yeah, the elementary school parents.
Actually, we have not, actually, we have not. Um, so that is something we can definitely look into, but no.
I will say, one, one thing that I do like about bringing it forward now is that it's giving a month before that first day hits. So if there is a need to make arrangements, there's some time to prepare. That I I do, I do like that we've at least got that cushion built in, that it's not next week when it's hap, when the first one would happen.
Right. And during COVID, we did work with several community partners, so we'll reach back out to them. And I know a big one was the Y M C A and Boys and Girls Club. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, discussion?
So when you devised this plan, was a survey taken of the teachers on how they preferred to be supported?
Did I do a survey to see how they would be supported?
Was the survey taken of the teachers for them to give recommendations on what support looks like to them?
No, I did not. I did a lot of basic observations, feedback from my central office personnel and uh teachers. It is, it's very taxing. Um, but I do have several people in the audience that I could pull from, and they could tell you. I have principals, directors, they are struggling, a lot of them, a lot of them. And I have one, um, and I always call on them, but it's just because he sends me stuff. Mr. Phelps, you actually sent me this email and it was like, we need this. And I was like, we're working on it. So, and it was about supporting his teachers.
One thing that I like, um, especially is that it's a Friday and not a Wednesday or a Tuesday. Like, I, I, as a, as an instructor, not, of course, for this division, but it's hard to like have a break in the middle of the week. I just had Tuesday off for Election Day, and like my whole week has been thrown off because of that break in the middle. So um I like the fact that you're extending that weekend and having that, you know, extra uninterrupted time for them.
Thank you. Would you like to hear from any of the personnel?
No, I know. I know, I'm on the teacher's side, remember?
I understand.
I'm on their side.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the superintendent's recommendation for teacher wellness days.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I I do have one other question. Um, I I am for this, but uh I didn't know, like, for the the students, how this might impact the students. I mean, is this another day off for the students as well?
Uh, you know, coming back from COVID, I'm going to say yes. But I'm also going to say that our teachers do their due diligence with signing, with assigning virtual uh learning, because they know our S O Ls are coming up, our benchmarks are coming up. So I don't think they'll be going home with just nothing to do. Because that's not, that's, that's not our history, that's not how they work.
Right.
But they do need a break too.
No, I understand that, but I didn't know about the the students having a three-day weekend. Are they going to lose that that momentum?
Well, it won't be a half a day.
It'll be a half a day, not a full day.
It's a half a day, a half a day.
Just two hours.
So it's just early dismissal.
Okay, all right.
They get, they come to school, they work, and then they get to go home early.
Okay, all right, thanks for the clarification.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second on the floor, so I will call for the question, and we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? We have wellness days now in the calendar.
I just looked in the audience, and I want Mrs. Brittany Moody to please stand. She is our administrative intern. She's working to get her uh license to be a principal and assistant principal and all those other good things, and she actually contributed to this uh presentation. So I want to tell you, thank you, your first uh presentation for the board. Next.
I think it's great while we're moving along that we're proactive on this rather than reactive. I think that's a great thing, Dr. Sterling, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to definitely look into those centers.
Just get mad at them.
Support, okay. Next, I want to give the board an update on the V I S at the Vista program, just to let you know that the Vista program, uh, excuse me, application, uh, action plan was created. Uh, uh, Dr. Carter and his team worked on that, and I appreciated that, thank you. I, it was sent in and reviewed. And now we have received an M O U uh working with the Department of Health, and then we did that presentation. So I wanted you all to know that once we review that, because it's so lengthy, we want to make certain that the attorneys look at it, because it's not something that has always come across our desk. So we want to make certain that the attorneys look at it, and then we will front-load the board to review it. And then we'll come back and pres, I'll come back and do that presentation for approval in December, and then we can start our COVID testing, okay, if it's approved. I did all that. Next, I cannot contain myself, I was talking about W H R O, and I just want to give uh the board a a a huge thumbs up and thank you for allowing uh me to be able to work with a dynamic team of individuals to chart a course of success. To uh recently, U S News and World Report named Joseph P. King one of the best middle schools in Virginia. Yes, a lot of hard work has gone into that from the redesign. It says, we recently published our first ever ranking of public middle schools, and the news is good for Joseph P. King Junior Middle School. Your school placed amongst the thirty, the top thirty percent of middle schools in the state of Virginia, making it a U S News Best Middle School. And um it goes on, make sure, I'm going to send this out to everyone, and you can click on the link. Out of four hundred and fourteen schools in Virginia, middle schools in Virginia, Joseph P. King ranked sixty four. Board members, we will be um posting, we will be writing to U S News and World Report the brand con next, so we can get the emblem on our website. We will have a banner ceremony at the next uh board meeting, and we will be sharing our good news. And we will also be sending out to our former principal, Mr. Darren Parker, a congratulations letter as well, because we want to make certain, we acknowledge everyone that had a hand in moving this division forward, please. So, high school and elementary, the die has been cast. But we are, we already know that we are and have always been a symbol of excellence. And I want us to continue to spread the good news about what's happening in Franklin City. But today is our day, and congratulations to each and every one of you. I I just couldn't contain myself. And I got one more thing to say, when I talked about W H R O, we used a lot of their videos from Algebra One and Geometry in the middle school, and they would do it all the time. And I really believe that that helped contribute to our ranking in U S News and World Report. I just keep saying it. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments?
That's great.
That's fabulous, I'm glad we could finally, we could finally get that out there. All right. Anything else, Dr. Sterling?
Oh, no, I'm I'm done, thank you so much.
All right. Next up, we'll hop back down to the number seven, Business by School Board Members. Um, we've talked about the Delegate Handbook, important dates to remember. Um, a couple of items that are not up there. Um, this weekend um is the Franklin Southampton Football Game, Friday night. And also the presentation of those inductees for the Wall of Excellence at the football game Friday night. And then the Wall of Excellence Dinner is Saturday night at the Country Club. Um, tickets, there are still still tickets available. Nancy Parrish is the contact for that, if you need to get in touch with her and want to go. It's a wonderful event. Um, Mr. Phelps can put you in touch with her if you would like a ticket. Is that okay if I throw you under the bus like that, Mr. Phelps? Um, behind that, of course, Veterans Day is next Thursday. Um, the V S B A Annual Convention is November sixteenth through the nineteenth. Um, are all of us going to be there? Who, who is not, who is, who is going?
I'm virtual.
You're virtual, okay. Um, we, we, I'm not, I think all of us probably Um, we, we, I'm not, I think all of us probably got an email within the last two days that they will be acknowledging the board for our master board designation Wednesday. So, and I, I think we'll probably have a few more things hopefully come out of that convention that hopefully we can announce come December. Um. Next up behind that is Thanksgiving. In addition to those wonderful wellness days that we just implemented, we are actually closed the entire week of Thanksgiving. So five, well, nine straight days. So we do wish, because we will not have a meeting between now and then, we do wish everyone a safe and wonderful Thanksgiving with your families and those that, those close to you. Um, and then of course, next month as well, we only have one meeting, um, that's scheduled for Thursday, December ninth, which I think we need to have a quick, um, conversation about, Dr. Sterling. Um, our meeting is scheduled for Thursday, December ninth, but my understanding is that, um, as you may recall, usually in December, we have a joint session with city council to talk about our preliminary requests for our budget for the upcoming, the, what will be the 2023 school year. We're already thinking ahead um, and looking at what those priority items are for us for that budget cycle. Um, we tentatively had put that as December the second and the city has requested, if possible, if we could do it on December the ninth, which is our meeting day. So that would mean that we would have to either adjust our time, our meeting schedule time for that day so that they're both on the same night, or either we would have to look at moving our meeting, or we would say that day doesn't work for us. Does the board have?
What did we do last year?
It was on a separate day. I believe we had them back to back. I think it was two nights back to back. I think we met with them and then we had our meeting the next night, if I recall.
If we had already requested the second and we were gonna put ourselves out there, is there anybody who could just swap days? I mean, is this space available or?
We can check. We, we could check and see if we're, if it's available for us to meet on the second and then have the joint session on the night. The only, the only caveat with meeting on the second, I, I do want the board to be aware, if we meet December second, the division is closed the entire week before. So anything that would come to us on December second, we would have to be asking staff to work over Thanksgiving or to, um, get all, those documents, it's no way they would be in the Friday before the meeting for us to review. They would, they'd be coming back on Monday and then diving in and it'd be a very short turnaround.
Would it be beneficial for us to have our meeting after we meet with the city anyway for anything that might come up then or?
Possibly, yeah. I, I mean, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a very smart idea. So that would push us to the sixteenth.
So when does the city want to meet?
The night, Thursday, December ninth.
So if we did everything on that day, we would have a long evening.
We would.
It's not good.
No, we couldn't, you know, the, the city council has some of the same hurdles that we would. So, you know, they have members that work as well. So five o'clock, we couldn't really push it up to five because they have people that work jobs as well. That would not be fair to those members of council nor would it be fair to those members of this board. Um, so six o'clock would still have to be probably the very earliest start time for that.
Okay, what about let's just meet with them on the night and then push our meeting to the sixteenth?
How does the board feel about that?
I mean, we normally have two meetings a month anyway, so.
Right.
I, I'm okay with that.
Dr. Sterling, would your team be okay with meeting the, ha- is doing the joint session on the ninth and the school board meeting being on the sixteenth?
Oh, uh, yes, I think that should be fine.
Okay. Want to make sure that that gives your, you and your team plenty of time. That should give you plenty of time to prepare for the meeting.
That'll be enough time to prepare for the meeting. I, I'll be doing the presentations. They'll, they'll be on the ski slope somewhere.
I know, they'll be ready for that wellness day.
The presentations will be done.
Okay. I would just want to make sure we're not inconveniencing our staff.
But does that impact the Christmas break?
That's what I was wondering. I was just getting ready to pull that calendar up. Like, when does our Christmas break start or our winter break?
That Friday, the seventeenth is our last day.
Okay, so we're still in session.
Yeah.
Physically, maybe not mentally.
Winter break has already started three days before that.
Alright, so Dr. Sterling, um, the request from the city. Um, I'm get- I want to make sure we're all in consensus, joint session with the city on the ninth, school board meeting on the sixteenth. Okay, so if you want to respond back to the city that, that we can make the ninth.
That's fine.
No earlier than six o'clock for the convenience of those that do work.
Okay.
Um, outside of the board. We're not gonna say that they don't work for the board, but outside the board.
In addition to.
In addition to, there you go.
Right.
Alright, so that'll adjust the meeting schedule as well for us. Next up, Business by School Board Members. Does anyone have anything to share?
Yes, I have follow-up questions.
Okay.
Uh, for Dr. Sterling. So, um, related to Charles Street Gym, but not exclusively. So just to follow up on the, I believe the robotics team and the wrestling teams. Previous years had met in the gym, but now they both have homes for this season. Is that correct?
Yes, um, uh, thank you for following up with me because I just did a walkthrough in the rain with, uh, with all the key players and including Ms. Lawrence, who is a gym teacher at JP King. Uh, I keep wanting to say Mr. Bull because that's all I know, Mr. Johnson. Uh, Travis, uh, uh, Mr. Phelps, Mr. Gamble. It was a, I think it was a very good meeting. Uh, we walked the facility. Um, we, we knew that there was a lot of damage in there. Uh, we talked about waiting for the letter to come back from the engineer's report. But I think we, one of the things that we really did confirm to, especially the wrestling team, is that this is their home and we just want to make certain that we do the restoration properly so they can return home. And, um, that was received well. And I did get a lot of history that I didn't know and I appreciate that about how people are so connected to, um, just the legacy that happens, you know, has, that has been taking place in Charles Street Gym. So I, I learned a lot and so we have a plan. We have a really good plan. And it was a plan that was approved by the coach and he's happy with it. I'm happy with it. And like I said, if we can get everything done within this year, we'll make certain that we cut that ribbon and, and bring him home.
That sounds good. Um, would it be appropriate if, since Mr. Holton and I self are on the, uh, Charles Street Gym Committee?
Absolutely.
Um, that he and I could meet with you at your convenience or when our schedules allow to, um, just dis- discuss future use of the building and?
That is no problem. The only thing, um, I would say is let's wait for that engineering letter to come in.
Okay.
So we, we have like a foundational report on how long it's gonna take to be able to get the, uh, facility up and running and, um, most definitely we can have those conversations.
Alright, that'd be good. I'm just so we're all on the same page. Um, is there, I was expecting maybe that study was gonna be last month, but have they, has the company given a timeline?
The deadline was November eleventh, uh, but as early as today, the engineers, uh, we emailed them and they say we would have it by tomorrow, no later than Monday. So still within that November eleventh timeline. So we're gonna get it back and of course, uh, your committee will have a copy of that and then we can go from there.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I think we have, you know, quite a few funds to be able to support getting that project moving fairly quickly.
Very good.
Um, I, I just had a, a question. I wanted to, um, jump back to the COVID, you know, testing. And I know that, I believe in, it was November, the beginning of November, that we were going to start requiring athletes and other, um, people who were, I guess, in high, um, impact. I don't know how to, what it was, how it was phrased, but certain individuals to have that vaccination. Um, has, how has that been communicated to the athletes and are, how, do we have a percentage of athletes that have been vaccinated? How is that working?
Okay, well, right now, that, that hasn't happened because we're working on the plan. And we just got approval for the plan. That's why we got the MOU. So no one could test anybody because we weren't matched to a vendor. When we think it was this week, we were just matched with a vendor. So we have the grant funding that came in the MOU, so that's not gonna be a problem to get people or have someone that in our division be able to test. But we need to sign that first, so we're legally bound to work with this provider to be able to provide the COVID tests for our faculty, staff, and athletes. Okay, that's the only thing, that's the last thing we're waiting for is to sign on the dotted line and then we can go ahead on and do all of those, um, surveys, get those forms out. But I couldn't do anything until we got an approved plan.
Gotcha. So the vaccines aren't required for the athletes until we have the COVID testing in place so that?
Oh, no, now remember, we don't require the vaccine. That's a family decision.
Right.
The only thing we do is the COVID testing.
Right, so, but if they're, if they don't have the vaccine, they're, it's mandatory that they get tested. So we're not pursuing the, show us your vaccination until?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Gotcha.
And, and that's a very touchy subject, show me your.
I didn't mean to misspeak. I mean, I understood that, you know, we, if they didn't get it, they would have to be tested, so I just wanted to.
Because it's such a close, um, remember how we talked about close proximity sports? And, um, that's dangerous not knowing, you know, for children. So yes, if we, you fill out that form and a lot of people that do get vaccinated are open about that, but even the ones that are vaccinated, we randomly test them too.
Right.
So, yeah. So you, so support confidentiality.
Gotcha.
Uh, regardless of that, um, the board probably knows my, uh, uh, position on a lot of this. My, my concern about the vaccines, and I know we're providing information about it. And I understand the concerns obviously about, uh, COVID nineteen. But I believe there, there is a serious, uh, side effects, even death associated with some of the vaccines. And I want to make sure that there's an inherent pressure to get vaccines for the students by the fact that they're being tested or if they want to participate. So I just want to make sure they have information or understanding that they can pursue further knowledge, understanding about the risk involved.
Oh, absolutely. And, you know, a lot of that is why we've been putting multiple sources of information, not just about the vaccine, but everything else on the website. But the, the testing more so is to make sure that if there's a child that tests positive, especially when we're talking about the, um, those participating in the extracurricular activities, that if there's a child that's participating that tests positive, we're not sending them out on a field to play against another team and expose all of those students as well. So that, that's, I think, if, if it's okay if I speak out loud on that, that's more so our, our gear towards that is not just identifying and letting you know that you've got it, but making sure that all those others that you are gonna come in contact with, you know before you go and expose.
Right.
That, that's more. Any other questions, comments? I have one other item. Um, last, at the last meeting, um, we had a speaker, Mr. Howie Sotek, that spoke in regards to mental health of our students and, um, gave us a letter and he had some resources that he was looking at. Um, and he has reached out to those resources. And they are very willing to come to the table to, um, go ahead and get something up and running for our students. Um, he has requested and, and he has, um, started that ball. At this point, um, what he's looking at for this committee that he is, um, taking the lead with, um, is a representative from the school board as well as a representative from city council, um, to sit on this committee. Because as he clearly stated, he doesn't feel that it's just the school division's responsibility to be focusing on the mental health of, of children. It's a community. Um, it should be a community focus. So that being said, um, is there a board member that would like to be a part of that? I did ask, just, just so everyone knows, um, I asked him, well, what are we looking at as far as meeting schedule? Because, again, some of us have commitments outside of the board. Um, so, and he said that it was, the way he, they typically would work this is it's what works best for the most. Um, and that he understood that there, there may be some that can't meet, that need to meet virtually, which a lot of it probably would be virtual. It may be where they can record it and you can watch it and participate later. You know, and we ma- and, and I, I think if we're looking at someone to be a part of that, we put a, an alternate in place as well, so we've got somebody else just in case that can sit in. So is there a board member that just says, this speaks to me and I think I really want to be a part of this?
I nominate Dr. Shelton.
She didn't say nominate.
You volunteer, you volunteer her.
With an, with an alternative, Ms. Williams, because, I mean, this is right up their alley. Just a thought. Throw that out.
The motion.
Did I hear it except?
You, is that putting you in there too?
I did.
You can put me on there.
Dr. Shelton, Dr. Shelton has very graciously agreed. And, um, I'll reach out to Mr. Sotek and I'll include you on that email so you've got his contact information, um, and let him know.
And Michelle is the ultimate.
Yes, just did you, make sure you get that.
Awesome. I, thank you both.
We were volunteering.
I didn't do the volunteering this time. Alright, and, and I'll do that. I'll email him back and I'll include both of you on the email so that you've got his contact information and he has yours as well. Alright, that's the last thing that I have, so that moves us to item number, I don't have my glasses on, eight. Um, adjournment.
Do you think I have a motion?
I move to adjourn.
Alright.
I have a motion, second.
Second, second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're done. Thank you everyone for bearing with us. I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna leave my stuff and come back in in a second.